Okay, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a king and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. All right. Good to go. Welcome, everyone, to Euclid Township Planning Commission, February 2, 2022. First on the agenda, approval of the meeting of the January 12, 2022, meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review?
As I have moved, I moved the minutes I've written.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this evening, we're going to hear from Gray Farm, 1025 Worthington Road, preliminary land development plan. Who's there to speak on their behalf tonight?
Is the microphone on or? Okay. It's on? Okay. Just want to make sure before I started, because I know we have folks on Zoom. Good evening, Allison Zarro, on behalf of Worthington Partners, Inc., the applicant for the Gray Farm. I know that you've seen this plan several times. Everyone knows this is a preliminary plan. We're proposing 73 single-family detached dwelling units under your open space option in the R1 district. We had last submitted plans, actually, quite a while ago, the last time you were here. My client, Tom Kessler, and Denny Howe, the civil engineer, gave you an update on the environmental. But we are here tonight on the preliminary subdivision plan. We had received review letters in August of this past year, and we submitted responses to those in January, just so that you would have a complete response to that. There are several items that I would note that the township had asked for in connection with this plan, and we are able to provide those items. There is a sketch that the township engineer had provided to us. I don't know if you have seen that sketch, but it was referenced in those review letters. So certainly, I can go through comments if you'd like, or answer questions, however you would like to proceed this evening with respect to the plan.
Does anybody have any questions with the review letters?
Any questions? It looks to me that it's like there's a lot to do.
I'm sorry?
Remediation is concerned.
So on the remediation itself, since we were last here, and since I was not at the last meeting, I don't want to repeat things that might have been said or be out of sequence, so I think it might make sense to have Tom Kessler address you and update on you on where we are with the remediation.
Good evening, everyone. Having here. Since, I think, since our last meeting, let's give a quick update. So we submitted our cleanup, our remediation cleanup plan to DEP. You received. I'm sorry. I apologize. We had previously, yes, late spring of last year, submitted our remediation cleanup plan to DEP.
Is there any sound from the meeting, anyone?
They said they're working on it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to, I thought I have my. I thought it. I am using it. Basically, the microphone, I think, is for the Zoom. Let me know if you can.
One other thing of note is that we went back, and as part of our discussions with DEP, we agreed to do some significant testing on the streams around the project. And we've done now, I think we're on, I think we've done two, two rounds of testing on them in at least half a dozen locations, on the property and above and below. And all of them, both, both testing have come back with non-detect. Just, it's good news that above it and below it, there was, there was a non-detect on all the, on the two sets of samples that we've, two times we've gone and tested them. So just good news, right? So positive.
So when do you expect to have a clean, clean DEP report? I mean, what's the timing on that?
Well, they have, they have a period of time to respond, but we're hoping that at the end of that 90-day period, that, you know, we will, we'll get approval for it. Because we, like I said, we have a very.
Approval for the plan.
For the remediation, for the cleanup plan.
The plan.
For the plan to do the cleanup, not the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is that what you, what did you ask?
I was asking when you were going to get approval, what you were just speaking to was the plan. So you're, so.
The remediation cleanup plan.
Before you get the plan to clean up, to clean up the site, right? The plan approved.
Well, this would be, once we get this approval, we're, it would be approval to clean it up and then receive the Act Two release.
And how long will the cleanup take, once you?
Once we break ground, the cleanup will take probably no more than three months.
So we're talking about a five-month window here? You know, at best case, five months, you would.
Yeah, I mean.
Have the approved plan, and you'd have the site cleaned up if everything goes proper.
Right, subject to getting through township approvals. We are, our NPDS permit, we should have well within that timeframe, and so, yes. What that? We'll have that in 30 days. We think we'll have our NPDS permit. We've already submitted, got notice of completeness, and we've already had technical review, and so we're back, back and forth with them. But it's, they're minor, minor comments, so we believe we'll have that in short order. So the answer is from the time, I mean, it's hard for me to tell you when.
Just trying to get an idea.
But theoretically, when we break ground, we will be, the remediation will be done within three months. The earthwork, which is, which is what we're doing.
Just to clarify, once you complete remediation cleanup plan, what's, you want to explain this work process of actually getting the DEP approval of what they call the final report?
Yeah, may I have Danny speak to the technical aspects of getting the actual release?
So, once we would have subdivision approval and begin to break ground, we would begin to then remediate the soils, which, in our case, we are going to haul away all the soils. So no soils are being buried, nothing's being left on site. Our remediation plan consists of simply hauling away all of the contaminated soils. As part of that process, and before you can actually get Act Two approval, we have to then do further testing, which we call demonstration, demonstration of attainment sampling, to show that what's left, there's, there's no more contaminated soils. As you remediate and you demonstration of attainment sampling, and you get your samples back and they're clean, we can then fill in those areas that we remediated. Once they're all done and all that sampling is submitted to DEP, we then, they have 60 days then to issue our Act Two approval. So we can't actually get Act Two approval until we have fully remediated the entire site and done sampling to show that it's been remediated, and DEP has reviewed that.
Well, so you finish the remediation, you finish the soil, you do your peremptory sampling, then you have to prepare a report to submit to DEP.
Correct, right.
Then, once DEP has their report contested, then they have time to review it and either approve, deny, or come back with more comments and start to clock over.
Well, they would, and Mark, I understand what you're asking, but they would only come back and ask that if we had submitted sampling that showed that, that everything has not been remediated. So once everything has been cleaned up and all samples are clean, I think it'd be 98% of them, that would be at or below, that gets submitted to DEP. There's nothing else for them to, to ask for. That's what the cleanup plan that we're getting approved right now does. As Tom alluded to, there was a 6,000-page report we had done. DEP had five comments on them. One of those comments was to test the existing streams next door, which we did, and they were all non-detect. A lot had to do with some well sampling, and other ones were just clerical typos in the report. So based upon that, the department has approved our plan to remediate.
So before, and I've got, you raised an interesting point that I actually had a question on, just, just so we can close the loop on Mr. Jordan's question.
Yes, sir.
So from the time, from now until you get the DEP sign off on the final report, you have a timeframe.
Correct, and it's, it's been in their hands now for, Tom, over, over a month.
From now to the final, until you get a sign off on the final.
The Act Two release.
The Act Two release, yeah.
They want to know when the Act Two release.
We can't even go that way until we have final plan approval and can begin to move earth.
They're just, they're asking for a timeframe.
Assuming you're going to get plan approval, and you're, because you talked about doing the three months worth of work.
Yes.
And then you prepare your plan.
Yes.
Right? And then you submit it to DEP, right? And then assuming DEP in 60 days approves it.
Correct.
What timeframe are we talking about from now to get that approval from DEP?
Well, from tonight would be only preliminary approval, so we would be back before this board again.
I'm asking about the DEP.
No, not ours.
How long from now to get the DEP approval on the final report?
Assuming that I'm breaking ground tomorrow morning and I'm actually moving dirt?
Assuming you're breaking ground, assuming you go through the process and you get your preliminary plan approval before the deadline for the preliminary plan.
Well, and then, so from that point in time, I'd have to figure out how long it would take us to get the final approval, but let's say it's three months. Let's say that we had preliminary approval in the middle of February, and we had final approval by March, April, May, say sometime in May, and we broke ground in mid-June. Then we would have the soils fully remediated by June, July, August. And this is similar to a job I just completed in Westchester. I would assume we would have Act Two approval then sometime in November.
Okay. But I think that was, I think that was.
That's, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I apologize.
Then you could start your, your building, your construction, your land development and construction would start after that point.
No, it would not. As we're remediating and we do demonstration of attainment sampling, which we submit to DEP, we can. If we have. And we can proceed with pipe work and other things, but most of that work is not being done in the contaminated areas, but we can still work out on the site, waiting for Act Two. We just can't, you know, we wouldn't be building any houses, but.
So you're asking for a waiver from the provisions of Section 511, so that you can both remediate and construct?
I would characterize as we're asking for a modification, yes, in that. We're not asking to not remediate it, of course, but to remediate the site without performing, without doing construction concurrently with it would be impossible.
So can you clarify that? You're asking the difference between a modification and a waiver?
Yeah, we're not asking to not remediate the site. We're asking to be able to remediate the site during construction.
Okay.
Right.
And you stated that would be impossible.
We said before, so that we're, so we're clear. We've agreed and had staff-level conversations that we would have a condition that there would be, we would not apply for, correct, Tom, a building permit, would not even apply for one until we had Act Two approval from the department, which would be sometime in, I think, best case, November.
But you stated it would be impossible. Why would it be impossible?
Because there's no, there's no money available to do it without an approved plan. No one's going to just shell out the upwards of a million dollars to remediate that property, hoping that things end up working.
Funding is what you're saying.
They need finance. They need, you can't get financing without approved plan.
Not, not just that, just the risk. I mean, you would agree, Mark, wouldn't you? I think.
I don't know that you'd like my answers on.
I do have a quick question. I believe Tara did receive that plan, is that correct? The plan that he was referring to that was submitted to, you received that on Monday?
The update, the resubmission to DEP? Yes, I did receive it Monday.
You were CC'd on the, when it was submitted in December, I think.
I was not. I got the notice that something was submitted. I received the updated report.
Okay, DEP has you on there as the recipient of it. Sorry.
And that meeting was in November?
GTA sent, I reached out to Dave on Friday and asked him for the updated report.
Sorry, the EP, EP has it on there that you guys were all CC'd on the report for the resubmission. So I'll have to look up the check for them.
Sorry, not trying to start that. But my, my point is, I didn't get a chance to review that yet. It was not distributed out to us.
Okay.
But I had a question, because there were concerns amongst the residents adjacent to the Gray Farm property about odors that were occurring while you guys were doing your, your Phase Two work. So my question is, for your remediation plan, that I just, I didn't get a chance to read, but I just have a question. Do you plan on stockpiling it for your testing purposes before it goes off-site, or are you live loading?
It would be loading it as we're, as we're excavating it.
Is that planned to go off as non-haz?
I'm sorry?
Is it supposed to go off-site as non-haz?
Go standard landfill? No, it goes off, I mean, it goes off, it'll, it would probably go to a facility like Clean Earth.
Correct, but it can go, if, when it goes to Clean Earth, is it non-hazardous or is it hazardous?
I would assume it's hazardous. We can't take it to a standard landfill.
Don't, don't assume it's hazardous, because it can go to Clean Earth as non-haz. Don't worry about that. But you do plan on live loading, is, is what I was getting after the first.
Say it again, sir.
You plan on live loading? So you're going to excavate out of the earth and directly put it into a?
Truck. That's correct.
And they will haul it from there?
They will haul it right from there.
Okay.
We just did this on the identical site in Westchester Borough. Nobody wants to handle that dirt twice. So trucks are lined up, and as they come in, they're loaded and they're out of there.
It just depends on how the accepting, the receiving facility, if they're okay with that, so. I'd, I'd like to review the plan. I just need to take time to review it, so. But I knew that was a, a major concern with the local.
Yeah, and like I said, we'll be back here for a final approval for the next few months. So there's certainly, and nothing, we're not starting any construction during preliminary, so there will be certain, we'll be back here, I would imagine, in March and April and May.
Nick's worried about the, asking about the dirt being hauled away. The backfill that's being brought in. Who's testing that?
There's no backfill being brought in. We're actually going to balance.
About being replaced with taken out?
We're going to use the fill that's already on the site. So our, our earthwork is set up, the hallway, it's about 24,000 yards. So in the scheme of how much dirt that is, that's not very much with how much we'll move on the site. So we'll backfill those areas with dirt that's already on the site. Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what's the percentage of the sort of total site? I don't know, maybe in, in percentage of site and plan, or percentage of the development site that this contaminated soils represents?
I don't, I don't have it. It's a, it's a very small area compared to.
It is a very small area, and is it, is it a localized area, or is it sort of spread all over the place?
Dan, you have, do you have that? That? Yeah.
It's in multiple locations?
It's in multiple locations.
But it's not like spread all over the place?
There are trenches.
Is there any opportunity to do a phased kind of construction or land, or, you know, site work? So that you could actually, you could sort of almost approach your site work and designate some areas where you're kind of full-on in construction? And then you're asking for really, instead of asking for a waiver for all of it, could you isolate some areas that you need a waiver on? And that way, you could proceed into, and, you know, see revenue come in and, and start your work in areas that you, that you know are not affected by the contaminated soils?
No, I mean, it's in several locations. I mean, it wouldn't, we could phase the site work after we remediated, but it all has to be remediated at one time. Otherwise, you'd, you know, you run the risk of having out there during, during storm events for a longer period of time, and we can't.
Right, 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 right.
We can't haul it out. So we would want to remediate it all, all at one time, before any, any earthwork activities begin, other than soil hallway.
I have a good question, just.
Yep.
On the response to DEP's. So there were two comments about, one was about inadequate characterization of monitoring wells or remaining trench area, and then also, uh, correlative wells in the background. Have those issues been addressed?
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah.
As part of our meeting with them, we, and based on the acceptance of the minutes of the meeting, that where we talked about how we were going to address those, they have been, they've been addressed by DEP satisfactorily. And part of it was the, the stream testing that we did, and part of it was from, from the well sampling, but we.
What was the last thing you said, officer?
Part of it was from the stream testing, and also the, you know, the well testings that we've been doing. We have, we, in our resubmission, consistent with our discussion with DEP, we satisfied them as to how we were, you know, as to what we were doing, and they were, they were comfortable with how we walk, talk, walk them through it. They had questions, and obviously, in the meeting, we had to, you know, it's a big report. We had, we just had open discussions, and they understood our, where we're coming from and the testing and the results that we'd given them, and in addition to the additional stream testing that we did, so that we'd adequately resolved those questions as part of our resubmission.
So you took, sorry, before you run, so you took groundwater, you took stream samples from where groundwater was daylighting into a stream, is what the thought process behind that was? Because gray's on a, on a hillside, right? And I'm assuming you collected brown, you collected stream samples somewhere down?
Up and down. We went above the property, on the property, below the property, in at least six locations, as, as determined by GTA, as where they, where they wanted it. So we, we covered on and off the property to even see if it was, if there was any, any contamination, anything coming up from before it even hit the property, and there wasn't. On the property, there isn't, you know, and the other locations, all the locations that they tested.
So you think.
And two rounds, and two rounds.
And two rounds. So between your conversations that you had with DEP, you guys think you guys have that adequately characterized at this point?
Yep, and, and we believe that DEP also is, is comfortable with that, so. We do, and just if I go back real quick, you mentioned about the, sort of the phasing. The other reason that I wouldn't do that is because I wouldn't have any, I wouldn't allow any development of homes going on unless the property was fully.
Yeah, when you brought up stormwater, that made sense.
Stormwater and just, and just on the property. You know, we're not doing anything, the first thing we're doing.
Is get that done.
Get that done.
But that's why, that's why I'm trying to figure out what the, what the net benefit is of the waiving, because if the first thing you're going to do anyway is, is, you know, you're going to focus 100% of efforts to get all that soil off, because you've just stated, you're not comfortable with any construction level until all that soil is remediated. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what do you, what, the timeframe that you're saving is just the review, this whole, it's basically the, the red tape period? Is that what, so what is it, what does that equate to, like, three, four months of saving? Is that what it is?
Well, it's not, it's not really, there's just no, to do a development like this, this property has been sitting here contaminated for decades. In order to, in order for, in order for it financially to be possible to do.
You need to feel that you know.
You need to have, we need to have financing, and we're not going to, you're not going to get financing, and also, you're even, you're just not going to have somebody clean up a property like this, take on that risk without having a vested approved plan, whether it's a bank financing or any other financing, even if you had it, you just wouldn't do of this size and nature without having an approved plan.
I got it.
And on top of that, logistically, it makes perfect sense to do it as part of the initial land development plan, because it's seamless. It goes right into perimeter controls, and then right into cleaning up, and then we move, then he has balanced the site, so that once we, we empty out the.
That must be the development.
Dead areas, we can immediately move the dirt to fill it in, and a seamless, seamless sequence of construction and the plan. It's just, it works actually, just absolutely perfectly.
It only works if you, if you meet all the requirements, and once, that, once you're complete, then you pass the test. But the difference is between, I mean, I totally get what you're saying, but the difference is that you're now seeing revenue in construction without actually having passed the test.
No revenue, no revenue. There's no revenue until, until the houses are built.
Right, 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 right.
It's debt, debt, debt.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then more debt.
Yeah, you just want to make sure, yeah.
Well, we're not, just to be, just to be clear, the process, once you get, once we get the approved remediation plan, that, that tells us exactly what we need to, to get the Act Two release without any further response from DEP. It's all in our hands. So we go out there, and once we've remediated it, and our consultants are going to be on the site every day, and once we get to the bottom and it's clean, they're going to test it.
Yeah.
Until they come back with a result, we're not filling in any dirt, because we're not going to send the report to DEP.
Right.
Unless it's clean. Once we, once it's clean and we send it to DEP, they're going to take 60 days, but that's it. There's nothing, there's no comments from them. It's just, okay, it's clean, 60 days to issue the Act Two release.
And if for some reason, like, something changed in your own site and you're in this, and you realize, wow, it looks like we might not actually achieve all the requirements, you can't proceed anyway. So that's all, that's what I was thinking, is, because I just wouldn't want to see you guys get, you know, builder gets entrenched in a project, and then it's much harder for them to stop, to be stopped, if they, if it turns out you haven't been able to fulfill your requirement. But you won't be able to, because you literally won't even be building anything. Your first part of building is the remediation. And you'll build after you, after you pass the remediation.
And remember, afterwards, we have to then, we have to grade the site.
So. Right.
And the grading of the site is dependent on first excavating out the contaminated soils and then moving it. So we can't move dirt from, you know, it just doesn't, it just, logistically, we can't do it, and we, I wouldn't do it, because we're building a clean site here. The whole purpose of this is to remediate the site and clean it up, and you guys acknowledged that last time, and that's, that's what we're doing. And then after that, you know, we're going to build, build the plan and build the homes consistent with the zoning.
If the process ends up going way over your estimated budget for the remediation, you guys eat it.
Yep, yeah. That's, and that's, again, the, why the, why we want to do it as part of.
Your risk is right there, but you need to at least know that you got through that before. Yeah, that, that totally makes sense.
And even if we wanted to proceed, build houses, and you said to proceed to build houses, and the supervisor did, we still couldn't do it. Because no, we're not going to get financing from anybody on the planet. Construct residential homes on a property that's still contaminated.
Yeah.
It's impossible.
Right.
So you had a conversation, what was your meeting, do you think, or was it?
It was in November, yeah.
November.
Like mid-November.
In December, and 14th of December. But you don't have anything yet in writing from them saying that they're satisfied with these conditions?
Well, no, the next thing we would get would be, would be the approval. We did have is, after the meeting, we circulated to DEP, I'm sorry, is this on? We circulated to DEP the minutes of the meeting, which discussed how we were going to resolve the five items that they had questions about. They approved those minutes and said, go forward and resubmit your application.
Okay, but you have that, and approval of your plan?
No, we're in the 90-day time period for them to review and hopefully, obviously, issue the clean.
This is the second, I'm trying to remember.
Second, yep, yep. Yeah, we went from one, we went from 6,000-page document, our, their first review was five questions. That was, that was the scope of that meeting, was five, five questions they had, and three of them were in relation to identifying the contamination, and two, one of them was like a technical on how we classified the report. And the other one.
And one was testing the streams.
The one was testing the streams.
Which we did.
So.
One was the failure to accurately characterize the main trench area, and the other was the failure to actually accurately remediate the offsite, rather, or the bubble, or the correlative bubble.
Right, but it, it wasn't so much a failure as if they, they needed, we needed to have the discussion with them as to how the report demonstrated their questions about that. So, and they were resolved at that meeting, and then we, like I said, we had, the minutes of the meeting were approved by DEP. And then we, like I said, we had the minutes of the meeting were approved by D P which, which resolved those items. And we did the testing of the water and we resubmitted the one technical thing about how they wanted us to, to label the report.
What the letter says is not accurately delineated, is not accurately characterized. You're saying that in the meeting they said-
We worked through those items.
It made a mistake and now they're okay with it?
It wasn't a mistake. We worked through their questions and they, they were comfortable with our analysis of the testing we did, the unbelievable amount of testing that we did. They, they were resolved at the meeting, they, they agreed with us.
So in the next month or so, we should have approval?
Well, they have 90 days, so our hope is that we, yeah, within 90 days we'll have approved cleanup remediation plan.
After all?
I can't, yeah. I mean, everything that we did, everything that came at that meeting and subsequent to that meeting to the submission of the report indicates that we've resolved all of the items, the questions that they had at that, at the meeting. Can't, you know, I can't go any, I don't want to, I can't say anymore than that because I'm not at D P, I can't. But they're all there, all the parties were there.
This is a little bit of change, change a little bit of the part.
Well, I, I mean, I would disagree with you because we're, we have a land plan that is now, has five comments, I think it was five, five or so comments on it. Most of those comments were things that the board has asked us to do that are not required by the plan, by the, by the ordinance, but we, we agree with them. We thought they were, were willing to do them. One was a trail, one was a turning lane.
Field.
A field.
The last comment you're talking about.
The Dan's review letter.
Not, not the D P.
No, 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 they're playing. So we have, by, by any other, if you put the environmental aside, I don't mean to minimize it, obviously, what we have, in my opinion, in my experience, Danny can talk in his experience, we have a plan that typically I'd actually be at final approval for. So now you bring in the environmental and obviously that's taken rightfully so, more time, we want to make sure we're getting the right, you know, we did all the testing, we, we wanted to see where we are with D P. We received very positive feedback from D P. So we feel at this point that we run concurrent with D P as they're reviewing the final comments from our resubmission. We go get preliminary plan for Fuvial. Again, this is preliminary. We're going to be back in front of you and the board for prelim, for final. And by then, we expect to have it, but we need to move, sort of move this along. There's, there's time commitments, there's all kinds of other things that are going on. And I just think right now we're at appropriate point. We're not asking, again, we're not asking for a waiver, we're asking for, you know, what they call technicality modification, it's a timing. We're not saying we're not going to do it, we're just asking to clean it up as part of the land development plan, which I think anybody, I'll put Dan on the spot, but if you ask an engineer, they say, yeah, this is, makes logical sense to do the cleanup the same time at the, right at the beginning of starting the land development. So-
We have plenty of approval for sure. We'll have N P D S. I think, I'm gonna say in the township engineer's letter, there were mainly comments that were geared towards, I don't want to certify this letter, but HOA documents, there were a number of comments that were, as Tom said, the suggestion of a left turn lane, both the township engineer and McMahon said that although not warranted, they would like to see a left turn lane on Worthington Road. We agreed to do that. They also asked for a trail out from Worthington Road, we agreed we'll do that. They asked for one of the areas that we're going to face to be graded off kind of flatter for the field. We also agreed to do that. I can't think of the fourth one, man. But-
Couple, couple, this trail and a couple of quarters.
Right, right. So in our mind, while there's outstanding comments in the township engineer's letter, they're all very minor or not in the ordinance, but irregardless, we've evolved them, HOA docs, those things, just say your apartment for the horse, we would normally be doing that at the final. So- I was really, I was actually talking about the- Environment, right. But in, in general, we're, we're kind of in a phased variety and we're comfortable saying we'd be looking for, for final approval, but we're not because of, because of the environment. So to ask for a preliminary with virtually clean letter from your engineer, planning module approval, N P D S is administratively complete and technically has been revised and sent back to the conservation district. It's, you know, the plan's not going to change really at all by how it looks in the next three months.
But the D P approval, are you, you'll start before you have that? Because you, you'll, you'll start after you have that D P approval.
We're not, we're not moving-
You're looking to break ground. You, I understand. So you're looking to break ground after you have the D P approval.
Yeah.
So you're going to have all those environmental approvals in place before you break ground.
Just, just, just like-
You just want to, you just want to be able to remediate while you break ground. Like you want to break ground and remediate and be the first phase of your construction. That's what you want.
Right.
You don't want to have to say, I'm going to remediate and then I've proven to you for two months of review that we have met our, our goals and now we can break ground before everything else.
Well, we wouldn't, I, I mean, the way it's, it's being told to us with regard to the ordinance is it's actually much more complicated than that. It's, what, what the township is, you know, purporting that we're asking for the partial waiver is that we would have to remediate the property with no approvals and then go back in for final approval, which could take-
And say, hey, we just spent a million dollars, I sure hope we can get approval.
Right.
And, and, you know, no bank, no, nobody is going to stand behind anybody.
Yeah.
So what, what's the wording behind your modification request?
It, modification is simply a timing, is that we would-
It's simply a timing, it's simply a timing request, so we are proposing to remediate, we will remediate the site as we've explained, so it's simply a timing request.
Yeah.
Essentially, and, and just to further clarify, as we've talked about, we're only asking for preliminary plan recommendation tonight, we're not asking for a final plan. So this pro, this, this process is going to continue and we will be back in front of you even before we would be requesting final plan approval, we will have the updated answer from D P to Mark's comments. We should have that response in March.
And, and remember, we're, whatever D P is, we're not moving forward, and I said this to you guys, you know, last time, I'm not moving forward unless we have a remediation, approved remediation plan that gets us to enact to release a liability.
No, we're not, we can't.
No, understood, but you don't want to wait for D P's approval?
No, no, we want to wait for D P.
No, they want D P's approval.
As part of the plan process, we want these things to be running now simultaneously so we don't have-
Those things.
No, I, I understand, but what if we said we wanted to wait for D P's approval? You would not like that, right? Is that what?
Well, we'd like preliminary approval and you, you know, maybe for final approval. I mean, obviously that would be fine, we'd wait for final. Typically, you know, with N P D S, with a Penn dot, I know environmental's a little different, I'm not trying to, you know, downplay it, but these are typically done as conditions to final approval. And that's all we're asking for is, you know, the D P remediate cleanup remediation plan approval be a condition to final approval and that, and that the cleanup would occur as a, as the first item, you know, we have a sequence and we'd be, follow the sequences through E N S controls. But then after you put E N S controls in and if there's any clearing that needs to be done, the next thing, the very next thing before anything else happened on the site would be the remediation of the soils. And then we would backfill, regrade the site and, you know, and continue along our ways. At that point, we know we're going to get a release because we're not going to submit or clean or fill in the trenches until we get, until our consultants say it's clean. I mean, that's, right, we're not-
You literally can't do anything other than E N S and, and the remediation until you get approval on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
And we wouldn't be back before this board for final.
Right.
If we had approval of the D P.
Yeah, because we-
At all. So you're, so it sounds like what I'm hearing you saying is you're, you're actually saying we could do, we can do the work, right? We can do the remediation without the plan approval, but we can't get the financing without the cleanup.
Exactly. No, no, they're, they're not asking for that. They're asked, they're, they're gonna, they're not going to start anything until they get D P approval on the plan.
And, and final plan for approval, and we can record the plan.
Right. But they want, once they have that, they want to be able to start construction and the first phase they're required to do is remediation while E N S-
But the ordinance says you're not supposed to get any plan approval until, not until, not just for D P approval, clean up plan for the, the site to be cleaned up.
Correct. That's why-
He wants the risk on.
Right, that's why they're-
That's why, that's why, that's why I'm asking, you could, you could do that cleanup without plan approval, but you're saying you couldn't get-
It's not financial, that's-
Right, there would be no chance to get it financed.
It will, it will not be cleaned up without a, with reported, a recordable plan. I thought, I mean, I just-
I understand, I think I understand.
It's, it's actually-
But I'm trying to, it's not a physical thing, it's a financial.
Well, it's, it's a risk.
It's a risk.
And I think there are two parts to it. I mean, the other part of it is there is an N P D S permit that's required that goes with it and we've talked about sequence and balance. So someone could, you know, remove the soil and sort of leave it there stabilized. Part of this is that physically, then this allows the site to be balanced as well.
And is your position that the final plan can be held, the final plan approval, you still want the waiver, you still want to be able to, you still have the final plan approval before the site's planned, right?
That's, that's, yes, that's correct. We need to record, we need to record the plan to get a modification of the ordinance that purports to require us to clean it up before we get any plan approval. We're asking for a modification of that so that we get preliminary approval, final approval, we can record, all the other things you would do, record a plan, you record the plan and the site gets immediately remediated before any further development. And we've also, Danny alluded to it, we also a while back indicated that we will happily represent or condition or whatever that no building permits will be submitted for or approved until we have an act two release. We're not.
But you're doing all the, so your proposal is this board and board supervisors' plans, the preliminary approval conditioned on you not getting the final approval unless and until, among other things, D P has approved your cleaner plan, right? That's right.
And we get the conservation?
Yeah, we all have that.
Yeah, you get all your permits. And then, and then you get your final approval with the waiver that says you don't have the permit, you want it to have a clean site, land development.
A partial waiver.
Yeah.
The waiver would mean that we're, we're asking that to clean it up, we're asking for a tiny modification to the, well, okay.
I mean, the, the ordinance says you just can't get a land mill, so you're asking for a land mill before it's-
Right, so whether it's partial or waiver, we'd be asking for that timing.
So you, so you, so you're almost, so today you're asking for a modification and then you're going to ask for the waiver and final, will I proceed?
I think they're wanting the same. People were asking for now the same thing we would ask for a final, is we're asking for time commission to approve the land plan. They want to add on, which we're fine with, the condition that the partial waiver would only, would be, also with the partial waiver, you approve the partial waiver, but as part of the condition of the approval, we're preliminary here, is that we get, you know, final approval, we have all of our permits in hand, we follow the-
Is there, is there any concern that we go through, assuming we get these approvals, you go through new building, but all the land building, you build roads and infrastructure and all, and you can't get the site cleaned?
No, because they can't, they can't get that far.
We won't backfill the site, so our consultants say you're done.
They can't, yeah. Oh, they said they-
They can do infrastructure.
They can do infrastructure.
Can't do houses.
And that's all, I mean, we, we close by-
They can do utilities, that doesn't matter.
They can't get building permits.
They can't get buildings.
They can't get building permits.
They can do utilities.
But they would be, they would be buried if they couldn't get building permits.
Do you have to vote on this tonight? Or can we law this out before we grant them permits?
They have, if they can't get building permits, they're, they're ruined.
Right.
They, 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 their incentives are very high to meet all their requirements.
I don't see any downside to this.
And you know that they need to start.
I want to make sure those facts are clear.
Well, okay.
And that's, I mean, I think so.
Well, we can, we can-
I want to make sure that is clear, what you're asking for.
Okay, I, let me try to sum it up. I think, I think it's, I think it's getting, kind of making it more complicated than really it is. We're simply asking ultimately to get final approval on a plan that we can record and start the work. The only thing different about this development than any other development that you, you all have approved is that prior to really, to moving forward full steam with earthwork, piping, sanitary, storm, is that we remediate the soils first, okay?
First.
The ordinance, there's an ordinance that says we have to remediate the site first. Well, that's, that's just, you know, we've said you guys can agree, disagree, we, it's not going to happen, the site's going to continue to be contaminated. We have family members here, it's been contaminated for 35 years, it's not going to get cleaned up that way. And we think this is a fair and reasonable resolution to this. We're going to do it. We have, our consultants are going to be out there testing it. We're going to have to post financial security for the development, right?
Keep in mind that the recorded plan, of course, will have those financial security for all the remediation as well. So the site gets cleaned up, whether that is a good thing to, people not, the site will be getting cleaned up.
Yeah, if, if nothing else, this site's going to be cleaned up. If something happens and all the money goes, the security will clean the site up and it won't ever then be developed. But I mean, obviously that's a big risk to us, but we don't, there's no risk because of the money's going to be, the financial security for the entire job, the cost for putting in the pipe, the stormwater, all of that is going to be posted as financial security at, at risk to us if we can't clean it up. We, we know we're going to clean up, we know what it is. Like I said, G T A has spent, I mean-
It's going to have a million dollars on it, so.
It's characterized, it's going to get cleaned up. Again, to be simplified, we're, that's all we're asking for is a typical-
I wasn't the one that said we're going to carry it, I'm just reading the D P.
Well, you're in the, well, and what if you can't clean it up? It's going to get cleaned up.
I'm just reading the D P though. That's the only, this is the only thing I have.
But Mark, we're asking, we're not going to do it without the D P.
I understand, but you're telling me that, that everything's a god and the only thing I have is a D P.
Then, then we're not, we're not asking for a blanket approval, give a conditioned approval, one of the conditions is N P D- Yes, permit. And the other condition is that we agree to do the items on the last review letter, which we, so I'll write back saying we will, and then we get a D P remediation cleanup plan approved? It's, I mean, you know, I don't-
And we'll be back here for a final in March, April, May, June, however long it takes, the cleanups are ready, councilor's here comments, so. A lot of, we'll have N P D S in a couple less than three days, we have plenty of approval. I don't want to put words in dance mouth, the dance letter is from the, very clean for us. There's nothing on that plan that's going to change and we've also agreed to do the left turn lane, the trails, the field and everything else.
And we're good with all that. As not being an engineer or anybody, this is bombarding me with a lot of stuff that
me with a lot of stuff that I am listening to you, I'm listening to him, I'm listening to me, and you want me to make a decision right now. I, in good conscience, can't. Now, if you want to come back next month, we get the information, you know, a couple of days before meeting and there's pages and pages and pages that are just, it gives me a headache to read everything on the computer, you know?
I understand. From our perspective, we've been we've been doing this and interacting with the township for years now. It's not, and I'm not, I can't, not your fault in what you're seeing it or whatever, and I apologize. But from our perspective, you know, we, you know, again, I'm over half a million dollars plus engineering to get where we are today. We've given extensions to township. Township's asked us for extensions. We've been happy to do it because we wanted to, you know, rightfully see the first response to DEP's letter. We got it. It was, quite frankly, very minimal.
Well, so this is so this is what I think. So I don't really think that's a fair characterization. That I think what what we the reason that town asked for the extensions, and frankly, fond memory of the last meeting and conversations, what we were what I understood was we were going to have a decision from DEP before this board and the board supervisors have decided. So the question I guess the question is why if if you're hopeful that you're going to get this approval from DEP, that's going to be contrary to this October 19th, 2021 letter, why don't you give the extension? Why don't you give an extension so that this board, the board supervisors can have that in hand and it would it would cut through a lot of this this guessing about what it's going to be?
Let me just make two comments to that. First, we didn't that wasn't you. We submitted the DEP in June, okay? We were then we'd come in front of the board. We had the timeframe had come up for the board to have to make a decision in August. We were asked and we agreed to do an extension because you wanted to see and it's fine. We wanted to see too the initial comments from DEP because quite frankly, wait, let me, Mark, let me finish, Mark. We wanted to see you. The response was from the township, we want to see what their initial comments were. We were fine with that because quite frankly, if the DEP came back and said, your analysis is horrible, we disagree with this, this and that, we might have said, okay, you know what? We're not going forward with this. So we were fine. We were all on the same page on that. We waited. We got the comments back. They're minimal. And I don't, I'm not looking to classify. And the reason I'm saying I'm not looking to classify is because at the end of the day, it's irrelevant. What I'm asking for is a preliminary approval conditioned on getting DEP approval. If we whether that whether you agree with me or not about whether whether I'm I'm telling you a yarn about whether DEP what happened at that meeting is irrelevant irrelevant because all I'm asking for is to make it a condition to approval. But please give me preliminary approval tonight. There's 100 other things in the development process that have to happen simultaneously. And if we keep stacking them and waiting and now you're saying to me, initially, the conversation was, let's just wait to see what the what the initial feedback was from DEP. And now you're saying you want approval. But that's not what you asked for before.
Prior to October 19th, 2021, you did not expect an approval from DEP after 90 days?
In the first go around?
Prior to October 19th, 2021, you did not expect an approval from DEP?
I didn't. I was hopeful. I didn't expect any. It's DEP. I expected. What did you what? You think I expected that?
You I didn't. I don't. Did you expect to get a deficiency letter saying you failed to properly characterize the site?
I expected the comments back, of course.
Absolutely. You submitted the initial plan expecting to get a deficiency letter saying failed to properly characterize. You're in this business and you can ask any environmental person out there to prick out a environmental anybody. You have to submit something that's 6,500 pages. It wasn't. How many pages was the text? Not the exhibits, not the data.
Well, they have to review the.
How many pages was the text? Regardless. No, it is not regardless.
Mark, you may get ready for it.
Saying a lot of things and I even I didn't come in here. I didn't come in here intending but I'm hearing a lot of things and I the reason I'm asking these questions, I want to make sure the board has.
No, Mark, I think.
Hold on, let me finish now. I want to make sure the board has the accurate information. And when I hear statements like, oh, we'll be we'll be done with DEP in five months, I have to jump in and say, wait a second, that's my process. That's just not right. So if I can, I don't expect to submit plans to Dan Bailey and get back a clean level the very first time or the Conservation District or Pendote or DEP or your sewer engineer, Joe Valdez. It never happens. So no one ever submits. Never happens in act two? Are you kidding me? No, never. In fact, I expected to get back a maybe a five or 10 page, 20 year review letter. If I could get five comments, it was a huge, huge compliment. I'd never want to waste time to go to the plan DEP or anything and receive back an approval letter the very first time.
We we understand all that. So.
Before you have, I mean, so you're characterizing it as we only wanted to see what DEP's eventual comments were. Has it helped the board or the board supervisors, the township staff to just have comments from the?
Because, Mark.
That you're now saying are resolved, but we don't have anything to. No, I mean, isn't that a fair point?
You know, I honestly think that this is this is being made more complicated than actually we're asking for.
No, understood. But here's the thing. I agree with Dennis. Dennis said we would like to review this. This has kind of sprung up on us in the February meeting. When was the date of the letter that you just the report that you submitted to DEP?
December.
We had a meeting in January with nothing on the agenda.
Township was copied on the correspondence from DEP.
My point is you could have came to that meeting and brought this up and then be asking for that approval in the February meeting.
We.
That is my point. But you guys said last year you were going to come to every of give us monthly updates and nobody was here at our January meeting except us. You could have presented all this information. We could have been here now potentially granting something.
There's nothing. I understand what you're saying, okay? But there is nothing that's going to happen with the report that you guys aren't controlling by saying you got its condition to approval is getting the cleanup plan approved by DEP. What? That's a condition. Whatever DEP DEP is the ages, we all agree, DEP is the agency that oversees this and has authority and jurisdiction. They're the ones who are going to give the approval, not the township, not us, not anybody else. So all we're saying is make it just like the NPDS permit is a condition to final approval, make this a condition to final approval. I'm not with all due respect, what are you going to review and come back and have comments for? You're still going to say, well, we want to wait till, as Mark said, he wants to now wait till DEP gives us a green light. And we're asking, we're just saying, can we please move simultaneously?
Maybe that's what we need. I mean, I told you guys from the very beginning, I myself personally want to see this site cleaned up and done.
And we appreciate that.
But I also, like I said, there's a bunch to look at and everything. And I don't know if I can trust you any more than I can trust anybody.
Well, you don't have to trust me. That's I'm not asking you to trust me. I'm asking you to trust DEP, the entity that oversees it.
DEP hasn't reached out to us. We have no idea what the DEP your conversation. We weren't invited to your conversation. That's fine.
You actually were actually aware of the conversation. You actually were aware of the meeting and given the date, time. Again, I'm.
Okay, maybe we were, you know?
But I guess my question for you is.
Jobs and do stuff and we're all.
Let me just let's just let's just take it down a notch.
Okay.
What what exactly? So I can understand. What exactly information do you need to process in the context of what we're asking for, which is simply preliminary approval with the condition, the condition that we won't get final approval, one, until we get approval from DEP, the cleanup plan approved. And two, at that point also, we'd be asking for a partial waiver on the timing of when the cleanup occurred. What if I'm just I'm just I'm not I'm not being I'm asking, what would you need? What do you need?
Just like like to review stuff and look it over.
What?
I don't. Everything, everything that I can see to see what's going on. I mean, there's a section here and you're asking us to take the township ordinance or section and give it a waiver. I want to make sure and I ought to do that. Should I do it?
But none of this is none of this is new. This has been on the plan and this has been for the last two years.
And this is to me, but I'm willing to accept it. Maybe I'm misunderstanding. But I'm going to tell you what my understanding. And I think you and I are going to agree on one thing that is getting weak.
I'm sure we'll agree a lot more than one thing. I'm sure we're going to agree a lot more than one thing.
Well, but so essentially, what I understand is that you're asking that you ran a modification or waiver, however, however you want to count it, to, for preliminary only final plan to allow you to do land development prior to the site being remedied, right?
No, no, start start land development, which would include the remediation as a first.
Well, okay, but to to like start.
No, it's not. I mean, that's 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 important.
Right. To do that prior to remediation. My.
No, not prior to remediation.
Including remediation.
No, it's the first thing we're doing is remediating the site.
Then why can't you wait and do the remediation and then come in for your land?
Because we won't have preliminary or final approval. We won't have a vested plan. It's just not feasible.
Some little ground here.
I mean, that's.
Other than the financing, Adam. But so but I'm trying to get to I'm trying to simplify. What what you're asking for is to be able, and I'm trying to be careful with my mind. You're asking to be able to start land development prior to getting a approval of the final plan from DEP that shows the site is clean from DEP.
The act to release. We can't get that to release without without starting.
Right. It's the same thing. Okay.
Well, but you're making it sound like you're asking.
No, no, I'm just trying. So but that's what you're asking for. What what you're what I thought the purpose of all the extensions was. Again, I don't know if this is enough for a waiver or not, but I thought the whole purpose of the extensions were so that when you've got in front of this board for a final decision and ultimately the board supervisors for a final decision on the preliminary plan, they would at least know that even though you haven't implemented the plan yet, they would at least know that DEP has approved the cleanup plan. That's what I understood.
But you guys.
That's what I understood, the whole purpose of the extensions of the deadline. Now, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I misunderstood why we extended the deadlines for, I don't know how many months.
Mark, you've known all along that the critical issue is the timing of when the remediation has to be done vis a vis getting a recordable plan. That has been on the table since day one.
Right. What's also been on it is the only way if we're not going to wait for cleanup, which I think is what the ordinance requires, we at least, I thought, at least wanted to see that DEP had approved the cleanup plan.
So we're preliminary approval. We're asking for it to be approved with that condition before we get final approval, just to keep things moving along.
Well, it's not.
I have commitments. There's obligations. There's things that have to be done. We start stacking these and all of a sudden it's down the line. It becomes a timing issue.
But you can understand why with a letter that says there's inadequate characterization.
Wait a second. You guys have reached out to the DEP. You guys had a conversation with them. You could have asked them about this. I my understanding is that there were communications between the township and DEP that someone reached out to them. They did. Yes, I mean, I you guys have been involved in it. You're going to get every correspondent. Again, Mark, there's two components to this.
I'm trying to keep it simple. Why I'm trying to simplify.
We are to make it very simple. We are asking to get a final approved plan. Well, well, ultimately, tonight, we're asking to get preliminary tonight, we're asking for a preliminary plan approval with a condition that we will not get final approval until we have an approved DEP cleanup plan. I'm not recording a plan. I'm not starting work without it, just like I'm not starting work without an NPDS permit. This is really.
I understand, but you were very honest about something. You said you hope, right? You hope the season is sweet. And my whole point was waiting to see what DEP says would at least take that element of unknown.
But it doesn't matter because I'm not moving forward. If it never happens, then we're never in front of you for final approval.
But it does matter.
But you don't ask for.
Because I'm the ordinance.
You don't ask for a NPDS permit.
I'm just wanting to make sure you ran a preliminary approval.
We don't ask for an NPDS permit, finally getting final approval. It's a condition to final approval. This is the same exact thing.
But you're not asking the township to just skip one step. You're asking them now to skip two steps.
What's two? No, we're not.
Instead of instead of just add, I mean, look, I'm not trying to be.
I think you are. I mean, this is seriously, Mark, we're asking.
You're asking them to make a decision on not only whether or not you can proceed without the site being clean, but whether or not you can proceed when there's not even a plan approved of the site. That's the point. That's the main point.
Is that if we never get a cleanup plan, then we're never going to find it. So I don't think the township is in risk.
Well, then how does that resolve your risk?
Because there's no risk to me. If I don't get it, I'm not moving forward to clean up the site.
Yeah, now I think we're going to say.
All right. I think this is being this is being made more complicated than it is. We're really just asking for move forward the process that will get us to a final approval. The final approval, the preliminary approval, just like the final, will say you have to have your NPDS permit and you have to have a DEP cleanup plan approved. That really is, that's it. That's really all that's in front of you today.
Right.
And and we're going to be back.
If I could go back for a second, just from a scheduling perspective, one of the reasons we're asking for this is that we started with a question of what would be the timeframe if we move forward to like, when would we think we would get DEP approval? When we break around? If we extend that timeframe out, we're going to start to hit winter again and it's going to go longer. So that is part of, you know, one of the reasons we're here tonight.
I get that much, really.
But.
Compared to the township, son, really the township, as to when any of these plans got submitted, that DEP didn't approve it, that DEP's taking the floor, and we both know they don't have to take the floor 90 days on the second time around or the third time around. Why are they taking this long? I don't know.
Well, it's been 30 days, so it's not.
Well, we're.
So you have 60 days left on that window?
Well, it's, you know, I got a letter from them in January, so I don't know with COVID whether they get to count, they get to extend it to that started in January or December. I need to I need to find out from them. But either way, we're 30 days at most into the 90 days through a holiday. I mean, it was submitted before holiday break.
So you've got so.
March 17th, if you take 90 days from when we submitted it in December, I think technically it's like March 17th. Now, they sent me a letter saying they acknowledged it sometime in first week of January. So I don't know. So there's two a two week lag, but we're not talking about a six week lag, but.
I understand.
But again, again, just to go back to it. What DEP does is is really irrelevant. We're going to get that approval and we're just asking that for as a condition. It really isn't. We're not, you know, we don't need to make something more complicated than it is. It's very straightforward, like any land plan. If there's a deep Pendote, it's a condition. Conservation, it's a condition. This is just another condition that you guys regularly do in the course of of land development and they have for the last whatever 20, 30 years, you know, whatever time you guys have been on this board.
I know.
Commission.
But we're not. We're not getting anywhere here tonight. So we're, we need to bring this to a close.
Can you can we can you give us a second?
Okay.
Really didn't think this was going to be. So just give us a minute. We'll circle back in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Take a short break for a minute.
I think it doesn't matter if we get there at 10 or 12 and you can eat a lot. It's pretty easy. Listen, I'm not. It's just.
So the question is, would you rather drive two hours more or fly two hours? You're not actually flying two hours, but make the flight two hours long. That's really the question.
I think that's the problem is when you land in Allentown, you get the T2.
35 minutes.
You know, if you land early or late, it's a totally different. I've done it all the time.
You got a point. Probably parking's cheaper.
Program. Pretty tough to fly out here with less than the stuff we have. Yeah.
You know, you got to have a little bag and there's no room above the plane. Like I don't. Everything's on my plane. I'm just.
I thought I had to make people move around because of the weight. I saw that. That was awesome. Michael, man, what kind of plane.
Now I see it there. They got it loaded up there.
Thank you for giving us the time. We've discussed and we understand that you just received this information and we don't want to pressure you. So we are willing to grant an extension for you to take a look at everything, assuming that the EP is going to respond within a timely manner. We could come back in March if we have our answer from them. If not, then I think we'd be looking at an April timeframe or an answer on that on the most recent review.
Okay. If you're willing to give an extension.
I guess that's through April.
Beyond the 90 days.
Yeah, we beyond the 90 days. So to Tom's point, if we're counting from December, that puts us at March 17th. But if they're going to count from when they acknowledged it, then I think we're looking at sometime later in March, which would run up on the April timeline.
Yeah, and then you and I discussed. I don't I don't know that that solves the waiver because that's I'm not the decision maker, but it certainly takes out one of the major elements.
Yeah. And also, to you, I understand you guys just received the information. Today we thought that you would have had it in some way. A lot of different reasons before. So we don't want to pursue it.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think if you phrase. And I think if we have a clear understanding of exactly what we're going to be approving to, that'll.
Yes, I will, we will make sure that, we will make sure, but I just asked, can I just ask one thing? And one of the things that we've never gotten, we've never heard of this, that we've been responding to. Communication, unconscious, and whether we're wrong, just a little modification we're asking for, the timing for remediation. Can I please get something from the commission? Absolutely not, absolutely yes. Can I get something?
Rephrase, rephrase your question, I don't understand your question.
I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying, we come back, we do a clear, path forward on exactly what we're talking about in terms of the timing, so that you can understand what we're requesting, and then you can make a remedy to it.
Right.
You don't have to wait that long, you can come back in February too, we're here in February. Well, maybe later, we're just assuming depending on whether the DEP... Correct, but I'm just saying you can come Friday and update, if you get a response, come in February, so...
This is true, boy, you mean...
Oh, I'm sorry, March, I'm off on one, wow.
This is...
March, I'm sorry.
So that, so we have a...
Yeah, I understand you're in a dynamic, so if there are questions from now, you know, getting up to that, so that we don't sort of have the low communication and then you guys feel like it's being dumped on, which nobody, I never do it that way, I intend to do it, I apologize somehow, but let's make sure we're communicating so that we don't have that, I can answer any questions, you have plenty of time to digest it, because obviously you guys are doing hard work and you need to be important to make a decision, and I wouldn't want anybody to rush, these are important decisions, I understand and I appreciate what you guys do.
Okay, thank you for that, because that's what, it's being informed before we make a decision.
Absolutely.
Or we might as well just say, go ahead, and not even listen to you.
I would never want, no.
I appreciate it.
But I think, I think we've said before, we do want this property remit, right? We want...
Yeah, I think we are inclined, is what he's saying, we are inclined to agree with you, we're just trying to understand that we're not getting ourselves or the township in trouble.
And trust me, I would never do that, because I know that, if I was in your positions, I would want all the risk to be here, and that's the way we, that's the way, if it's nothing articulated, and we need to give you more information so that it's clear to you, all the risk is here, all we're asking for is to take some of the risk from us off in terms of the timing, that's, that's great for me.
Could I ask one, could I ask one question? One thing that I'd be interested in, and I think it would make sense for you not to wait till April, even if you don't have the DEP approval, I think you should come back in March, because that's how we communicate, right? We could, we could have another discussion like this, now we know a lot, we learned a lot tonight, and we'll think about it and review documents, and then if you come back in a month, we can have another conversation, whether the DEP approval is not back or not, but I have a question that I would be interested to know, when we were talking about what we review is, I felt really comfortable when you explained that you're going to be required, you'll start, you'll break ground, first thing you're required to do is the remediation before you do anything else, including any other development, any piping, any of that, right? Where is the, where is, where do we see, like, where is that requirement held, it's not in the, it's not in the...
Sequence of construction.
It's in the sequency of, on the architectural plans? On the, on the land development plan? Okay, so you're, you can't get around that?
No, we can stop down to...
Got it, okay. Right.
Yeah, there's a two-fold, full port to that, so you have an MPDS permit, so if you...
Right, right.
Part of that will be the...
Right, and there'll be a review, yeah?
Like, in terms of who's actually monitoring what's happening out there, you have the township probably...
An MPDS.
And they're out there, they're early on, the process they're out there every week.
Oh, I know all about them, yeah, yeah, I'm a builder too, so I feel you.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, Tom, for your patience.
It took us a lot of time, a lot of time, I'm glad we could have the dialogue so we can see more of our...
That's right. It was a difficult dialogue. So we can move forward.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we obviously have a ton of comments on that box, we have related to, and just for the purpose, kind of virtually, we try to hold all comments to public comment, but when they're coming in, it's just easier to ask them all, you know, that doesn't take long. How would you like to handle that best, or as offense to reflect questions that have been to me, or...
We'd be able to come back in March and address any public comments.
No, why don't we do that?
Why don't we do, I think that that's a good idea, because we can come back, everyone will have read everything, and an update, and then I know you have other things on the agenda tonight, and I can more appreciate to agree with that, and we're, we're excited, and especially some of them are like the same question.
Okay.
All right.
We're good with that.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for your time tonight.
Yep, Scott, were you okay with Ann on to that one? Or not?
I mean, I think...
Hold on.
Okay, you won't, yeah.
I think, I'm talking with Mark, I said, I was just asking if it's just refined down and from...
Yeah, I asked everybody to ask any questions or make any statements that have not been already addressed, so if anybody at home did not see that in the chat, please include anything that you have, that you need to drop.
But I don't want to just, some residents have been on the call for...
Yeah, I think the concern is, and again, I don't want to prolong the, you know, but there are people sitting through this, I don't know that you have to read the hundred-plus written comments, but if people are here online who want to make a statement, I would suggest...
Well, what's the consensus?
Was that?
What's like the consensus, is it involving just one thing, or two things, or three things?
It's a whole, a whole.
All right, okay, we can go ahead with that.
Then you can ask people to be concise and limited to...
Yeah, so we've gotten a couple...
You know, three minutes or so, possible.
Do you want them to speak, or you want to...
We've received the...
Yeah, we've received the two times.
Okay, you want to read them out?
Yeah. So again, I ask everybody to address, to ask any questions or make a statement that has not already been addressed, that they'd still like to be addressed. I had somebody ask about the issue of a stop sign at the ingress and egress on Worthington Road, I've been so going to leave it for another time, but would like a response to that one. I have a statement here from Ben that says the township needs to stick with their ordinance, there is no concern by the people of the township that there is a financial risk by the developer. There's another one from Peter Turner that says hypothetically, if the township were to grant some kind of preliminary approval, does that convert automatically to full approval once they have their DEP Act 2 clearance? In other words, what further say or right of refusal does the township retain after the preliminary approval? This should be made clear, so we don't back into something. If the township grants this waiver, it essentially nullifies the ordinance, that's from Ben, again from Peter, who's responding to Ben, but does the township retain the right of approval to reject Act Doc 2? And then John said, I think they should not get modification because financing issues are their problem. Why isn't a third party doing these follow-up testing and not the developer's engineer?
They're all things that will be considered as comments, public comments, thank those people for their comments.
Is the board, I don't know if there's people here or online that want to give verbal comments, I don't know if...
Okay, with that, I do not, anybody in the audience have anything for the betterment of the Gray Brothers property?
Great, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, one down.
Just to put it on, somebody just put in, what about the entrance at Bowson too, so that it's one of those questions that's on it.
Right. Those questions will be addressed. All right, for number two this evening, we've got Eagleview Town Center 2, Phase 2 preliminary final land development. Do we have Neil?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone, Nick Harlow, Hankin. It's a little dry, I'll be a little harder here.
Okay.
So before we jump right into looking at our plan for Phase 2, you want to just give a brief overview of the project for the whole, so here this slide shows Eagleview, all of Eagleview, and I think this plan for this site shows it, it's orient, where Town Center is, it's a relationship Town Center, and also, okay, so the Town Center 2 really is an extension.
Did you turn the microphone off, because it was on? The people in the comments are saying they can't hear anything.
It says it's on, I can try and speak louder.
Okay.
So again, this slide shows all of Eagleview, and I think it accomplishes two things, one helps orient yourself so you can receive where Town Center 2 and Town Center are, and also kind of shows, again, that Town Center 2 is an extension of Town Center, and, you know, Eagleview is this irregular shape, but in Town Center and Town Center 2, they kind of comprise the middle, so the heart may be there. We move on to the next one here. So this is kind of zooming of Town Center and our Town Center 2 project, on the left-hand side of the slide, we have Town Center, on the right-hand side, we have Town Center 2, and again, we have connectivity via Wright's Boulevard, and Pennsylvania Drive, and of course, as part of the Town Center 2 project, we have the extension of Constitution Drive. And not only do we have connectivity between Town Center 1 and Town Center 2, but with the drives, we also have a walking trail that extends between, they drive, that's where Town Center is. Just to walk through Town Center 2, four phases, the first phase sits between Pennsylvania Drive and Fox Rothschild, so, and whole, manor homes, apartments, one house, full house, and pickleball court, pickleball courts, excuse me. And then on the west side of Pennsylvania Drive, we have Phase 2, we're going to town a little bit. Phase 3 is an office building, kind of in the right, bottom right-hand corner of this slide here, and then, just directly crossing that, across Constitution Drive, we have Phase 4, two market buildings, kind of a nice courtyard, open courtyard space in between Woodford Boulevard and, I agree. So this next slide here is kind of an aerial isometric view, and this kind of shows the full built-out of Town Center 2, out of the look in the future, and highlighted in yellow is Town Center 2 Phase 2. Of course, we have Town Center 2 Phase 1, which has, in the 36-unit building there, that's where the clubhouse is, directly across from that is the full, the full house. So the next one. So again, this is just another overall view of the Town Center 2 project, this is updated with our latest layout for Phase 2. Now that we're zooming in, looking directly at Phase 2, so 82-unit building, four stories, and again, so this changed really for one reason from outlooks on the conditional use plan. So it's part of the conditional use approval, we submitted a plan to show 82-unit building, three stories, a little bit longer, part of the conditional use approval, decision, sorry, was that, at that time, the township was going through the process of revising the ordinance relating to pipeline setback, and we have a longer building, we weren't quite 300 feet away from that pipeline, and just on the, just on the page on the western side, the left-hand side of the page, we have three Sunoco pipelines that are along the property line. And part of the decision during that conditional use process was to shrink the building, provide that 300-foot setback, that's really the main driving force between what's different with this plan and the plan that was, then two guys during conditional use. It was four-story building, each also was granted for conditional use, 82 units, same number of units, and buildings from, so, you know, we have, we're providing broad parking, there are many spaces before, number 60, a number of those spaces, you know, had to spill out to surface level parking. So the plan, we're showing a future parking area, should, you know, you get additional parking, showing a kind of a grand stairway, an entry into the front of the building with a courtyard. You can see at the bottom of the page, whitey trail, that extends between Pennsylvania Drive, on the right-hand side of the page, all the way down to Town Center, and that was installed at the end of last year, and showing other matches, you made to that one, or feedback. That's, that's, that's really the major changes between what we see here on this plan versus what was presented with conditional use application. We did, you know, we did receive a number of review letters, had a chance to look through all the comments, and it is fairly clean, however, you know, there are a number of things that we do want to conduct, and we'll be, maybe double plan for March. Our client would like to ask for recommendation, you know, we submitted the plan, preliminary final, have reviewed as preliminary final, so just want a recommendation to review and accept a plan as preliminary.
Question one, where are the 38 future spark parking spots at?
So there's a, there's a dash line there on the plan that kind of extends out of the left-hand side of the building, that's just showing the footprint of a future parking structure, and, you know, should the need arise, or you would need to construct additional parking, please, there be a structure there.
I thought that was the change in the building.
That's what I thought, too.
So, funnily enough, the building extended almost to the edge of where that dash line goes to, however, you know, to get that rear foot setback from the pipeline, so happens that that's how it ended up.
So would that, 38 additional spots, would that be elevated?
Be parking garage? Parking garage, yeah.
And that's okay to be within the 300-foot setback?
It is. And I'm assuming, this is a silly question, but the four stories, is it within the height limit?
It is, yeah, I believe it's 56 feet, we know.
Okay, I thought I read that, something like that, but...
Yeah, I had asked for a calculation worksheet to be completed to verify that, and they've done this before in the past, where they've, where they grabbed elevations, and then they provided worksheets, so we'll verify that for, for moves.
Okay.
But your request tonight is just for this Phase 2 part that you're showing here?
Yes, yeah, and again, just, you know, just to accept the plan, review the plan as preliminary final, regarding use of any other plan for the next...
So this building was part of the conditional use approval for Phase 1?
Yes.
Was it always designated as a Phase 2 build?
It was, yep.
But it was, it was still part of that approval scope?
Yes.
So in the Phase 1 approval scope, I remember there were some pledges by Hankin to meet some level of energy performance on the build envelope, like Passive House was brought up and some other things, I'm not sure where that ended up, I know there were concessions by Hankin, is that, does that apply to this building envelope?
It doesn't apply to the Phase 2 building.
There's lies, Derek, you could point out the, yes, the 30-unit building, what we agreed to was to construct that 30-unit building as passive house.
Oh, awesome.
We're actually in the architectural design of that right now.
Nice, for the one, for the, for the 32-unit, but not for the Phase 2 building?
That's right, it was, it's designated for the one building.
And then what are the other envelope, is there, is there, I think you were looking at LEED?
So, yes.
So that's basically LEED Silver, was it, or?
Yeah, there's not a, kind of a LEED requirement as far as from a conditional use standpoint, however, we will be needing at least LEED over to...
On the other, on all the other buildings, and then Passive House certified, FIES, do you know if it's FIES or international Passive House certification?
I do not know the...
Okay.
Neil, I'm going to, I'm going to jump into that, so the conditional use order says all residential buildings shall be constructed with LEED before Silver's handover, so you do have a requirement in the conditional use that this meets the LEED Silver.
Right.
And with exception to the 30-unit building, which shall be constructed with FIES, plus 20...
FIES, so that's, that's the US FIES, that's great, so just...
We're newer, we're newer.
Just for context, the LEED Silver is like from 2013? Just for context, the LEED silver is like from 2013, so it's great, but it's not great. So the Passive House is awesome. And I would just say to Hankin, what you learn from that build, hopefully is going to change you as a builder because what you're going to jump through to hit that Passive House certification is going to change things dramatically for your airtightness and your, you know, all of that. You're going to learn a lot.
Give us a password. If I could just jump in for a second. That actually is exactly what I think staff and the board supervisors, they put that in. They had hoped into us, and Hankin was very gracious in agreeing to do some of that work. And all was, all right, you understand Passive House is relatively new. LEED is starting to get old. I mean, guys my age think LEED's great, but now we're folks.
Sure.
And so I think the idea was, okay, well, let's try, let's get them, you know, if they're agreeable, use the passive, give it a try, and then hopefully.
Yeah, no, it's tremendous, and it's absolutely what will happen. And I think it's commendable, and I appreciate it.
I actually, I believe that, I mean, certainly with the Chester County, probably the first Passive House apartment building.
Apartment building.
Yeah, multi-family, like individual homes.
I think we might have built the first Passive House in Chester County.
Which phase is the 30-unit in?
Phase 1.
It was, so it was already built?
Yeah, no, it's not built. We're just being creative around marching along the timeline on Phase 1. So certainly, it's part of Phase 1. We're in that more technical phase right now, creating building permit plans. And certainly, you're right, it is, there is certainly a whole other level.
Yes.
As far as the review. Certainly, when you go to construction, right?
Lower door tests.
The lower door tests on the phone come certainly all over the place, on every unit, right?
Yep.
To make sure that you don't have air leakages and all of that. We're already doing the learning curve process.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I think our, certainly for at least that Passive House building is. It's a difference, saying if we wanted to be a little bit different than LEED, it is different, right? And certainly, the architecture, we're starting to think, maybe, maybe that should be a little bit different as well. Because of that, you know, you want to identify it. And being identified as that type of building. So, yes, it's very interesting, it's fun, and creative, and interesting.
Great, that's awesome. I'm excited about it.
I have the board chair also over there.
I know, yeah, it's great, yeah.
I could throw out there, you know, if we're going through construction, township, staff, commission, anybody wants to come out. And because I recognize that it is different, we're certainly happy to do tours of it through the process, certainly get completion. Get something to liberalize. The doors open.
That's good to hear, I'll be there. Okay, does anybody have any questions? Do we take questions from the public before we vote? Do you have anybody?
There's nothing more in the chat about this issue. There's some more that will be added to the previous chat.
Okay. All right, anybody in the audience have any comments?
Okay, look for a motion.
So, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we recommend Eagleview Town Center 2 Phase 2 for preliminary final land development plan, and that we further grant waivers of sections. What?
Time we're just doing.
Oh, just the waiver.
Okay.
My mistake. So then, we'll make the motion that we recommend approval of the waivers. That's 301.5. And section 402.1 be granted, so that, no?
Just the waivers, okay.
Just the.
All right, so I have a motion? Well, I have a second. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I think we can clean up some of the other things.
Okay.
Certainly, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody.
Yep. Thank you, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Chick-fil-A 211 Eagleview Boulevard sketch plan. Good evening. What's that?
Five. Five minutes? I'll maybe quit. I'm just trying to sell chicken. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Chris Riggle from Players Engineering Design. We're here tonight to basically get a recommendation to the zoning area for the variance. For parking, for the renovation, we're going to the Chick-fil-A. As you can see on the screen here, I don't have the leader pointer, but Chick-fil-A is going through internal modifications to a lot of their existing sites, facilities. What we're doing to this site here, as you show on the cursor, we're adding a 415 square foot building addition, which essentially is, it's a kitchen expansion, basically, so they kind of got their kitchen. They bring all-new kitchen equipment, they call it the Cadillac. So redo the kitchen, and then with that kitchen addition, we do dual drive-throughs. So typically, on bigger sites, they would have a dual drive-through on the entire site. The site's a little tight here, so we have a dual drive-through on the lower side. The menu board is, there's two new menu boards, and then there's a canopy over those. So the team members will come out, take orders, as they do now. And then there's another canopy, you have the pickup window on the top side of the page. Yeah. Some of the other things that we're doing here, this, we're kind of changing the circulation. This, it kind of actually flows that way now, if you guys have been there recently. We're basically creating a one-way entrance, kind of off that one-door road. You come in through there, enter the queuing for the drive-through, place your order, you know, merge into that one lane, and then go through, and then pick up, and then take the. You know, we're, obviously, the waiver that we're requesting, or will be requested, sorry, the variance, we're reducing the number of parking installs by 14. So, you know, we'll provide testimony to the zoning hearing board, hopefully get that variance, and then we'll obviously be back in front of you guys for any recognition recommendations. That's really it in a nutshell. Any questions you guys have, I can answer. Short and sweet, but there you go.
It's not really a question, but I'm just concerned that this really doesn't solve a bigger problem, that the space isn't big enough for what you guys are trying to do as far as long.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so.
It just changes the problem. It doesn't fix the problem.
I mean, not, maybe, but not necessarily. So what we're trying to do is with this kitchen remodel, it's basically, I'm not going to say cut in half, but it's supposed to basically, you know, get the cars, they come in the queue, they can get their food a lot quicker. Everything's processed a lot faster, there's more room for the employees in the kitchen. There's actually a little door, provided the pickup windows, so they can actually take the food out, the team members can go out, take food to the cars. If there's a car behind, then they'll have their food a lot quicker. So it's just to basically speed up that whole process.
It's not really changing the queuing of the cars, but trying to crank out the food faster so the cars can.
Sure, yeah.
Is this supposed to like transform this Chick-fil-A more into like, don't get out of your car, don't come inside kind of thing?
No, no, they're going to, so.
Will a little bit. There's 14 less parking spots.
There's definitely been a change in, you know, fast food throughout the industry with, you know, COVID, right?
Of course.
But, you know, the dining room is going to open back up. They're still going to be able to, you know, dining, I don't know exactly when that is. It all depends on what the new operators, but, you know, there are deadlines that those guys have to hit. The dining room is going to open up, so you'll still be able to get in there, keep inside if you want with your family. That's definitely going to happen.
I also have two other questions, sorry. When you exit the drive-through and you want to get back out on, sorry, what's that road? Eagle, Eagleview Boulevard? Can you make a left there?
You cannot.
Okay, good, so that way, everybody has to go right.
Yeah, people do, but you cannot.
People do with the sign saying no.
So technically, traffic should flow out of there, and nobody should be waiting to make a left, but.
Are you, I heard you say something about changing something into a one-way. So there's currently a two-way road that's off, almost off the Chick-fil-A property that you can get to Freddy's or to the corporate center.
That's remaining a cut through.
So that's still going to be there?
That's going to be there. What we're changing one way is that kind of that lower drive aisle. And so we're going to make the parking in there, and that'll be one-way. It's basically almost like a clockwise circulation now.
Well, it's two-way at the top, too.
It's two-way at the top, you're right.
It used to be. You're changing it to one-way out?
No, 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 that's still remaining.
Really? Because they're going the wrong way, then? Are you sure that's going to be two-way up top, off the Eagleview?
Don't worry, in the parking area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two-way. It's two-way now, but it's going to be one-way.
That's why the arrow shows it's one-way.
So this is what he's, this right now. Right now, this is.
Right now, it's two-way.
Now, in, or come out, and now you're basically making this, everybody has.
So everybody has to flow out one-way.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So it's in at the bottom, in at the bottom right, and out at the top left?
You can come, I mean, that, the access on the downhill four road.
No, 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 the parking spot, so.
That's a left-in right there, yeah.
So that, you go in, and nobody's coming out there.
That's correct.
And then everybody from this parking has to go out through the top left.
That's correct.
Which will help that area. We go to the Chick-fil-A all the time, it's horrible with traffic flow. People go any way they want, so.
Yeah. If for some weird reason, there is like a little exit alongside of the drive-through, where there's a long queuing, you can also, you know, exit that way.
Yeah, when is that?
But where does that put you? You go left or right?
You can go, you know, north or south, I guess.
Okay. And then, sorry, my last question is, so if it still remains as an open restaurant, where is the entrances then to enter the building?
Same.
Okay. There's a way to cross all those cars?
You'd climb over them.
You'd have to, you want your chicken, right?
Yeah, this is kind of like, this was our sketch plan, so we'll obviously, you know, it's conditional crosswalks. They have team members out there at all times, you know, kind of not directing traffic, but definitely helping with, you know, traffic flow and things like that.
Is there still going to be a door on the left side of the building?
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so with, you know, with this refurbishment, whatever, you know, they'll update some of the signage, stuff like that, but it'll look exactly the same now. Increasing signs or anything like that. One of the things I've learned actually is, go there, the beak on the chicken is open. They're going to like a closed beak now, I don't really know why, but that's just something they're doing. So if you see a closed beak, that's like a new word of Chick-fil-A, so. Some Cooper thought for Japanese.
Is there any way you guys can work, and I haven't really looked at the site, with the office buildings that are behind you, that you can use any of that parking? Or is that, I know you guys cut back on parking from the very beginning, from everything we read. And it just seems like, you know, you're cutting back parking again.
Understood, so, you know, Chick-fil-A will, I believe the landlord for Chick-fil-A is the same that owns that. So if need be, like through, you know, testimony with our traffic engineer, and they have to look into something, they.
I'm just saying, can you try to reach out, maybe at least where employees could park and door. Some people, yeah.
There's a whole gully there. There, so people aren't going to walk.
You can build a bridge over the gully.
Yeah, but then you have to cross the road, the access road, you have to cross over.
I don't know, it seems problematic to me that you're reducing spaces, I don't know, it's.
I mean, there will be a reduction in seats. So right now, there's like, I believe there's 140 seats. It's with the kitchen expansion, it's going down to around 70 seats. So it's kind of got to be about that. So if a lot of different townships, their requirements are based on number of seats. So if that were the case, then our parking requirement would actually go down. With township, it's based, it's 50 square feet, or more than 50 square feet. So obviously, we need a lot of parking installs for the size of this building.
Is that what you're going in front of the zoning hearing board for?
For parking, yes.
So you don't have enough parking spots, is that the issue?
That is correct.
And you need to have that separate drive-out at the beginning versus putting parking in there?
Yeah, there's just not enough.
There's just not a way to really fabricate additional spots?
We looked every which way we could, yeah.
That's where the other, that's where they're taking out the spots, are right there, right there, right? Taking out spots, so there's not enough room.
Correct, it's just, why would you enter, I guess, unless you get upset that the line's really long? Then you just bail.
In a lot of time, like.
Right.
Some, you know, it's almost like a bypass, right? So if you get in line, or you're given a backseat, throws up, and you have to leave it. You can't, what, you know what I mean, there's just a way, you're not stuck in that drive-through.
Yeah.
I know, this is going to be a much more expensive thing, but have you thought of looking at a new location as opposed to, you could almost swap with the Wendy's, I think.
I can't, I'm sure they have.
Because this lot really doesn't fit the traffic flow. It's, I hate going in that area at dinnertime, because it just.
Yeah.
It, I mean, I know that the business is doing well, because there's a lot of people buying chicken, but it just causes such a disaster.
Yeah.
I don't see this fixing it, I think it's just changing. That's just my opinion.
Guys, if you don't mind, I want to share with you a little bit of the backstory of these two, when this site here was developed, and then you had a site to the north. There's a shared parking agreement between the two uses. And ultimately, here, my review letter details out that they need to provide more information and evaluate the combined parking for basically both this use and the use to the north, if they do have a shared parking agreement. The condo association here next door is, was developed by the owner, J. Low Associates, or that owned both of these lots. They do not own that center anymore. That center is the condo association. I think they're actually hired as a management company for that condo association, but they do not own that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure they may own a building or two still in it. Currently, where our office used to be right next door, the employees and customers pre-pandemic were parked, would come over and use that lot. And there's a driveway access to get into it, is here along the shared drive-through. So that currently, not necessarily any kind of agreements for that to occur, but they do, employees and customers would come in and park in that area when the lot was built. So if they don't have authority or authorization to do that, if that's my knowledge, if no shared parking agreement, they'll allow that to occur. Just a little context background on that.
So basically, you're going to add on to the kitchen and hope to move people through quicker, is about what it boils down to. Like I say, we're not really changing a lot, you're just going to try to move them fast.
Yeah, I mean, it's honestly, I believe this, I don't know the exact date of this tour. It's due for an upgrade, quite honestly. You know, the kitchen equipment is obsolete. They can prepare food better, quicker, you know, better quality with better kitchen.
Okay.
So they'll have to come back in, because this is a building addition to a non-residential use. It does warrant and will require a land development application. So they have to go in and get their variance and prove their hardship to the zoning hearing board. And then they would be back, if they were successful with that, they would be back to, with you guys, to a, I'm looking for a land development approval for their site applications that they're doing on site.
Okay, that gives us a little time to look things over. Is that?
Yeah, we're, I mean, in a perfect world, we would be in front of the zoning hearing board in March and then the few guys following.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any other questions or comments? Anybody think from the public?
Yeah, there's a couple.
Okay.
So it's, is the redesign like Downingtown?
Similar.
It's similar, but not because it's not a dual pickup window, so the engine is just now.
And then Lindsay has said, I'm just curious why the expansion can't be done internally, move the kitchen into the seating area since the area is not being used and hasn't grown to here to expand that way instead, or get rid of the play area?
Are you going to answer that? I mean, the dining room is going to, is going to open back up, so it will open up. They are going to take part of the indoor dining area, which will be part of the kitchen, they'll push everything out. That's why there's a reduction in seats, so.
And then Lindsay just said the curb removing is very helpful, thank you. Panic exit is a nice feature, honestly. And then, so is this going to have the door in the back like Downingtown added not too long ago? If so, aren't people with, who get their food then stuck in the line around the building? It sounds like more of a backup than a help, but maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Uh, that's no.
Because I think her point was that Downingtown, they can get out.
Yes.
Whereas here, they're stuck in one lane.
Yes.
Downingtown looks just like that when it's full.
It has three lanes and cars.
Yeah.
All right.
Like I said earlier, I don't see there being a good solution here. I don't think this fixes your problem at all, but.
Get to it.
Maybe.
Alrighty, so you're going to the zoning hearing board?
Yeah, you guys need to recommend us to the zoning hearing board or vote on that, or how that works?
Um, no, recommendation is not required.
I put the best plan, the recommendation's not required for the best plan.
Okay.
I mean.
They, they, they can, it's my understanding, they can, you're planning to make some, you guys could recommend to support the variance. You could recommend to not support the variance, or you could take no, no, no opinion on it. Let that, let that prove the hardship.
I would appreciate your zoning.
Well, I don't know how to do that on a vote, except we could go down the line and get everybody's opinion.
I feel like I've shared my opinion, but I don't see how cutting spaces is going to make this, especially if you're going to open back up, it gets any better. So I don't think I can support it. To me, I think you should leave it as it is as opposed to making any changes, because it doesn't fix it.
I, I have a question. Was there like an impact study on the surrounding traffic to this plan done?
Um, we do have a traffic engineer, they've done studies of a lot of different Chick-fil-A's in this area that they, you know, they've been our traffic engineer. So they have data on new stores with dual drive-throughs, they have data on existing stores that have gone through this upgrade process. You know, I, I've done two, I've, I'm working on a lot of these, I've seen two that have been completed. One was in East Norton and another one was around in Delaware, actually, another one down in Concordville. So those, those actually have the dual lane all the way around them, but they're definitely working a lot better.
I've been to the one in Concordville, and the dual lane all the way around does seem to work pretty good, but it's a bigger landing platform, too.
Yeah.
I just, I, it's hard for me to get my head around whether, like, obviously, you're expanding the kitchen, you're going to be able to put out more volume per minute. And, and now with the dual lane, in theory, you can, you can now accept those customers to buy that. But what I don't understand yet is, does that really change? If there was already a demand and people are being held up to get into Chick-fil-A, I'm not sure this actually has any impact on the surrounding traffic. And so for me, it's like, whatever happens inside that property is going to either be good for Chick-fil-A or people are going to get kind of pissed off and not keep coming back, but that'll all balance it out with the market, right? But I just, we care about, does it like cause something that just now makes it already a worse situation in that area for, for the people who aren't buying Chick-fil-A? You see what I mean?
It, it backs up, though.
It does, you think it does.
It'll back all the way out with its current status and with this additional lane, I mean, you're sliding in two for five more cars. But it's supposed to be faster, I, I don't know. A lot of people around here eat Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, well, hopefully the newer kitchen and everything and a smaller dining.
Yeah.
It'll work. I don't think it's a perfect plan, but hopefully it's better than what's there now.
Yeah.
That's my opinion. Anybody else have an opinion, anyone, boys?
I agree with that.
All right, thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay. With that, announcements. Two fourteen Board of Supervisors, seven thirty. February sixteenth, Environmental Advisory Council, six thirty. February sixteen, zoning hearing board at seven P M. All right, with that, do I hear any other comments or questions from the board or from the public?
Do we change? Yeah, I was about to say. At seven?
At seven.
Okay. With that, do I hear any other comments or?
No, I'll move that way, I'll move that way to your end.
I have most, no, your end?
I think we all second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you, everyone.